I want the meeting of the City Council to order and ask that you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, when our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Nudera?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Vestito?
Here.
Mulliner?
Absent.
Brennan?
Here.
Verimus?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Is there, item two, is there anyone who has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the City Council? If so, please raise your hand. There being none, we'll move on to item three, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in to speak at public forum this evening?
Yes, Mayor. We have Jim Hodapp.
All right, Mr. Hodapp. Tonight, we're, the public forum microphone's over on the, my left, your right. And if you would just state your name, and address is optional, but it does help us get back in touch with you if need be. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes so that others may speak and the council may get its work done. Thank you, sir. Proceed.
Can you hear me? Yes. Yes, I live at 739 Stewart Court. I sent information to everyone in the council here with regards to, I sent you an email, the mayor, an email saying that, some proposals. I have, own a McDougal house. My father knew McDougal. It was, it's very well-built. It's a three-bedroom, and it was built on a original prairie, Virgin Prairie. And I became involved with the Save the Prairie Society about 39 years ago and realized that the seed bank was in my yard, and I've been mowing around prairie plants for 35 years. And I have a beautiful yard. No complaints, but next door, I have an embedded real estate agent, rehab, construction company, both. I have the prime lot on Stewart Court, and they don't like prairie plants. So I, last year, I got fined $200 in the Parkway for growing daisies, which I did not plant, strawberries, planting, all of which attract wild bees. I have a, not a healthy bee colony anymore. The bee population has drastically dropped, but I have more bees than my neighbors who use chemolong. There are no wildflowers. There are no, there are no bees, there are no butterflies, and as we all know, the world ecology is collapsing. I'm asking, one, to either grandfather me in so that I can continue to mow around prairie plants and continue to try to help save the bee population and our children's future. The weed codes of Elmhurst and in every little town and city in the state of Illinois says that you cannot grow wildflowers and grass over eight inches tall. Otherwise, that's a, that's a fine. And weeds are defined as anything other than grass. So grass and flowers cannot grow together. As a Christian, that is offensive, since Christ said, "Consider the lilies of the field and how they adorn the grasses, for they neither toil nor do they spin." And yet, King Solomon in all of his glory was never adorned as beautifully as just one of these grasses. And that's part of the problem. Real estate don't like it, you know, because my yard is attractive. Children go by and they look, and you know, there's bees, and there's dandelion, you know, seeds, and there's things for, that we all grew up with, and now those are illegal. And the only thing really basically legal is grass under eight inches and nothing growing in it. Well, that's killing all of us. So I'm asking, one, to reconsider these weed codes, which I hear Brookfield might be doing. And, two, I sent information to everyone. I've taught for 35 years. I sent a three-page newspaper article on my teaching experience in Oak Park, eco-observation, junior naturalist teacher. And I'm asking for the village to join me in helping to re-educate our citizens that weed, you know, herbicide is not healthy for us. Seventy percent, as I send the mayor, to the mayor, seventy percent, well, all of our rivers and streams are polluted. And seventy percent of that pollution does not come from farms, doesn't come from industry, it comes from homeowners spraying their yards. So I, I'm asking, I guess, in a sense, for a revolution, but I'm asking just for one yard at a time. Let's take that step. What I find now is teenagers and 20-year-olds, they're extremely depressed. They don't feel like they have a future. I mean, if you're watching the news, the global warming, the whole world ecology is out of control. So I'll let it go there. That's my name, James Hodapp, H-O-D-A-P. And I'd appreciate, I don't know if the mayor got the letter? You did? Did you get the, how many people got the newspaper article that I had? Three-page newspaper, "Hody Coyote" and "The Bug Man"? Nobody got it? It was supposed to be sent to everybody? And I also sent a description of the house and the lot, and the size of the lot, and where it is. And I hope, you know, if you didn't get it, I don't know why you didn't get it.
Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Hodapp. All right, is anyone else signed up?
That's all that signed up.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wants to make public comment that didn't have the opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. Mr. Pogash? To your right tonight?
My name's Claude Pogash, I live at 566 West Gladys. I was going to cover another subject this evening, but I seen the addendum. Item 4.7, crack sealing. They cracked sealed the street I live on last year. Didn't see one individual from the city. No yellow trucks. Not a soul out there. But I had a little difficulty seeing across the street. Parents had their children on the sidewalks on one side. The dust was so heavy, you couldn't see a house across the street. Now, I've seen this operation a few times in the city. They really don't care. They caress it to create a giant dust storm. Isn't that just wonderful? And then they run around and fill the cracks. Well, maybe you ought to have somebody who represents the city down there, or come up with another method of doing it. Because all you had to do was be out there, and you had to choke to death. And if that is what you accept as aldermen, and it's city administration, then, gentlemen and ladies, you don't really care. So maybe when you find out where they're going to be doing this crack sealing, maybe you ought to just drive by. So you can see actually what's taking place. And then maybe you wouldn't be so willing to hand out this contract. Because when they come to your neighborhood, don't plan on walking outside, don't plan on having your children out there, but do plan on washing all your windows. And if you got a car out there, you might as well take it down to the car wash. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a fact. It's not a made-up story. And it happens every time you guys, pardon me, and ladies, vote in a contract like this that is acceptable to you. And if that is acceptable to you, then we've really reached a new low standard. So maybe you ought to just send some of the staff down there, and they can stand in it. And maybe they wouldn't appreciate it either. So before you so willingly give out this contract, you better change the rules of the game. Because of what you don't know, is you've put the lives of children and residents in trouble. It affects their health. You may not care about it, because they're not doing it in your block, but they don't hesitate to do it wherever they're doing it. If that's the best method we have, then I would prefer the streets to be all cracked So you don't have to believe what I just said, but just find out the street that they're going to be doing this on, and take the moment and time to go there. And if you can stand it, then I guess it'll be acceptable. But when you can't see a house across the street because of the dust storm, then I think you really put the lives of the residents and their children at stake. That's your choice. You sign the contracts you voted in.
Thank you, Mr. Pogash. Is there anyone else who wanted to have an opportunity to speak at public comment? All right, thank you. We'll close public forum. Onto the consent agenda. I can have a motion to put the consent agenda before the council. Alderman Deuter, second. Alderman Hanquist. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda. Do you want to ask anybody Mr. Pollard? I'm sorry. I'm assuming too much. Is there any alderman that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda, either to discuss it further or to vote no? All right. There being none, thank you. We need a...
Item 4.1, minutes of regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on June 6, 2022. 4.2, accounts payable, June 20, 2022. 4.3, report case 21P13, City of Elmhurst text amendments, tents and membrane structures. 4.4, report Addison LLC RDA amendment. 4.5, report water rescue, aluminum boat and trailer purchase and disposal. 4.6, report 1, 2022 Ford F-150 four-by-four with plow. 4.7, report crack sealing and seal coat program. 4.8, report City of Elmhurst 2022 tree inventory. 4.9, report 2022 inlet cleaning program. 4.10, report 2022 asphalt rejuvenation program. 4.11, report 2022 water main improvements project, construction bids. 4.12, report 2022 concrete pavement patching program. 4.13, report annual renewal for lucidity sophomore system. 4.14, report intergovernmental agreement with the County of DuPage ARPA grant funds. See item 7.1. 4.15, an ordinance granting sign variations to the property commonly known as 331 North York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 4.16, an ordinance amending ordinance number ZO23, 2021, to authorize the extension of time for the final planned unit development permit for the construction of an addition to the building located on the property commonly known as 180 West Grand Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. 4.17, an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision for the properties commonly known as 165 North Clinton Avenue, 169 North Clinton Avenue, and 360 East Schiller Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. And 4.18, a resolution regarding the release of certain closed session minutes.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. I'll ask that you call the roll.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Vestito?
Aye.
Mulliner is absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda is adopted. Onto item five, reports and recommendations of elected and appointed officials. Five-one, Mayor Levin. About four items. First of all, we had a memorial ceremony for Chief Ruth a week ago Friday, and I would like to, in particular, thank our police and fire staff amongst, and as well as our communications director for putting on what I thought was a most fitting service honoring our departed chief. I've attended a number of those kinds of ceremonies over the year, and I've never seen one put together with such class and care and ceremony involved. So I was very proud of our staff for doing that. I believe, I'm talking to the chief's wife, it meant a lot to her and to the other members of the police department as well. I also want to publicly note that Attorney Jim Ryan, Attorney General Jim Ryan, passed away, former DuPage County State's attorney as well, and a longtime resident, maybe lifelong of Elmhurst. And so we express our condolences to his family. Item three, today is the federal holiday for Juneteenth. We are supposed to be meeting tomorrow. I'm not going to ask you to come back because you're here, but it was really just a calendar failure, because this is the first time we've had it come up on our agenda. So it will be under what is known as the Reagan rule. So next year, we will meet on the Tuesday following it, if it falls on a Monday. So we celebrate that tonight, even though we're here. Last, we, I attended two centennial park dedications in the old Redeemer Building. On Saturday, they dedicated the adult center. It was a very large crowd there. And then on Sunday was the outdoor park. As I drive by there every day, it's packed with children enjoying that park, so I congratulate the Park District on that. That is the mayor's report. Five-two, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. The trolley is, of course, running Fridays and Saturdays, and we've had great crowds on them, so please encourage residents to continue to use the trolley on Fridays and Saturdays from noon to midnight. A week ago, we had a storm that came through town, and a couple of items related to that. One, I want to thank ComEd because their power restoration, they, we got, we were on the very southern edge of the storm. It kind of followed 290 and then turned south with some straight-line winds, and we had quite a few people out of power. The, our new government affairs person, Susan Stangmeyer, was constantly on the phone with me, emailing me, giving me updates, which I really appreciated. She's going to come out to a meeting in the near future to give the annual report, but I, I thought they did a great job in restoring us. I understand a couple people were out for maybe 24 hours, I should say, more than a couple, some areas, but they really worked hard to get that back up and going. And then regarding cleanup from that, our arborists, our forestry crews have been out, mainly on the north side of town, some in the College View area, and then the east side, picking up larger storm debris. We've also partnered with Republic, our trash collector, to get out there. They were out Saturday and hit quite a few areas of town. They will continue to do that and encourage people, they can always put the brush out with their regular garbage service as well, this week or next week. But if, if you have a larger tree that was taken out by the storm, let us know. You can use the, the app that we have, Elmhurst Connect, or contact us here at City Hall.
Thank you, city manager. Is there any other elected official that would like to, has a report to make? All right. Clerk Tamer.
I just want to announce that Council Chambers has been an early voting site, beginning on June 13th and ending this Saturday, June 25th. The hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 7 o'clock p.m., and Saturday, 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. I also want to point out on Election Day on June 28th, that even though you received in the mail that you have a polling place, you can go anywhere in DuPage County and vote. So they have a system that will catch that, and you will be able to vote wherever is easiest and closest to you in DuPage County, or you can go to your polling place as well. So more information, you can go to the DuPage County election site, or our elmhurst.org has information.
Thank you, clerk. Anyone else? Alderman Nudera?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements for Fifth Ward. The Elmhurst Police Department will hold a neighborhood roll call tomorrow, that's Tuesday, June 21st, at Berkeley and Valette, at 7 p.m. Residents and families are invited to attend and learn crime prevention information, safety tips, and meet the patrol officers who are assigned in your neighborhood. Also, the Fifth Ward residents are invited to attend a town hall meeting hosted by Alderwoman Tina Park and Alderman Jim Nudera on July 12th at 7 p.m. at the City Hall in Conference Room Two. Topics presented will be new metro station project update, bike and pedestrian plan implementation update, Spring Road and York and Valette economic development. Fifth Ward residents are encouraged to email in advance any additional questions, ideas, concerns, and/or comments to Tina Park or Jim Nudera.
And predicting the overflow crowd will come in here if it gets to be too big in Conference Room Two. Other announcements? All right, very good. We'll move on to resolutions, or committee reports, rather. Would you read the report, Clerk Tamer?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve a conditional use permit for a final planned unit development with site development allowances, map amendment from R1 to R4, 278 West Butterfield and 290 West Butterfield. Final plat of subdivision at the properties commonly known as 278 and 290 West Butterfield Road and 1 through 5 and 1,002 1 to 1080 Elm Creek Drive in Elmhurst, Illinois, with the following condition. The applicant shall work with city staff on easement locations for utilities. This includes the properties subject to this request and reconfiguring the adjacent Eldridge Townhome Development Utility Easements. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Danny Palmski, Chair; Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chair; absent, Emily Vestito, Alderwoman, Ward Six.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion to put this report before the council. Motion, Alderman Palmski, second. Alderman Jensen. All right, Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone who has been involved in this agenda item. So that's staff, the commission, the committee, other aldermen, residents, neighboring residents, and also Aimco and their representatives for their involvement and their willingness to make some changes. So Aimco is seeking a map amendment, a conditional, or a conditional use for planned unit development with site development allowances and a final plat of subdivision as part of this application to construct the Phase Two of Eldridge Townhomes located just south of Butterfield Road. Phase One was approved by the council and consists of 58 townhomes. This is Phase Two, and it consists of 50 townhomes. The Eldridge Townhomes, you know, the existing and the proposed comprise a fraction of the density of this entire area, as the neighboring Elm Creek Apartments have a total of 378 units and 28 townhomes. So you heard that right, 378. This was something that was approved a long time ago, back when this was called B2 zoning. We don't even have that anymore, but it was a different type of zoning, and it is a lot more dense. The Zoning Planning Commission unanimously recommended this project and the associated map amendment, the conditional use and site allowances with, with the plat of subdivision. You know, in response to the recommendations of the Zoning Planning Commission and DP&Z, Aimco agreed to incorporate the following changes to both limit the illegal traffic movements, you know, this is something that's south of Butterfield Road, and there's a right turn only for the exit, and then you can only, at the, that end, enter from the one side, too. In light of people making illegal traffic movements or, you know, non-conforming movements, and to prevent any future issues, they've made some changes. And these include install the IDOT standard flexible delineators on top of and adjacent to both sides of Triangular Island to limit movements of right in and right out. Install gates at the southern edge of both phases of the Eldridge Townhomes. So we don't have these here. Some municipalities or some communities do, but we are, you know, Elmhurst is mostly landlocked, and most of our homes are not in a traditional, or what's come to be known as a subdivision. While we have areas that are called subdivisions, this was, this will function like some newer community subdivision to have a gate in and out. So that will prevent residents of Elm Creek Apartments from traveling north to Butterfield Road, thereby limiting the use of the intersection to Eldridge Townhomes, residents and visitors only, as reducing the total number of vehicles using that intersection. Aimco is also going to install a sign at the Butterfield entrance stating that Eldridge Lane is a private drive, no through access. Install a video camera to monitor the intersection, and add a clause to residents' leases, starting that, stating that repeat offenders for these traffic violations at this intersection will prompt fines or other disciplinary action. So this is, you know, without an existing or documented crash issue or queuing of cars from this location to the west, which is where Butterfield narrows, and that's where the illegal turns would be turning on, too. Aimco voluntarily agreed to make these changes despite the fact that IDOT has not suggested that existing volume of traffic interrupts or impedes the flow of Butterfield. So in light of the unanimous approval from the commission and also the committee, I would like to ask for your support for this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Palmski. Is there any discussion on this report? Want to say it? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm respectfully not in support of this report, and I'd like to share with the council why. I do appreciate the work the commission's done, and the committee, and Aimco has clearly looked to, to address a number of concerns that I have as Seventh Ward representative. But fundamentally, I disagree with moving forward with Phase Two of this project until these public safety concerns are addressed that are associated with Phase One. The report before us outlines measures the applicant is going to implement to hopefully address the vehicular issues in and out of Eldridge Townhomes. Phase Two will not have my support until these measures are implemented and demonstrate that they've actually addressed, addressed the issues at Swain and Butterfield. I ask other members of this council to consider taking a similar position. And some of you might be wondering why I'm taking such a strong stand on this. Number one, Eldridge Townhomes is in the Seventh Ward, and I can tell you firsthand, the residents on Swain are not happy with the current situation. And I understand why. I've spent hours and upon hours sitting on Swain witnessing these illegal turns. And although there have not been, you know, maybe a published accident, it's only a matter of time. So, so I get their frustration and their concern of the safety. And I do hope that the countermeasures that are going to be implemented will address the issues, will address that issue. that are going to be implemented will address the issues, will address that issue. That said, the issue exists today, and I'm not comfortable with going on to a Phase Two when there's an issue with Phase One. The second point that I want to make is that I have two examples that tell a factual story of the current state. Example number one, Elmhurst Police Department recently placed an intern at Swain and Butterfield to observe activity in and out of Eldridge Town Homes for 11 hours over two days. The intern witnessed 250 turns in and out over a period of time. Of the 250 turns, 25 of them were illegal. That translates into at least one illegal turn every half hour. It's only a matter of time until something negatively happens. The example two, I actually just witnessed today. As I frequently do, I don't frequently go to the dentist, but I did go to the dentist on my way home. I conveniently stopped at Swain. I parked my car on Swain anticipating that I'd see something. The question I asked myself before I put the car in park, will it be a half hour? So I took a picture of my watch. It was 4:48:25. At 4:50:24, so two minutes later, I not only saw an illegal violation, but the worst of the three illegal violations. I visibly saw a person get into their car outside their townhome, approach the exit, and darted across Butterfield Straight onto Swain Avenue. It wasn't a left turn in or out, it was a straight turn down Swain. That's very dangerous. And they flew by me. I was sitting right there, and I have the video to show it, if you'd like to see it. It only took two minutes for this infraction. So I honestly, I don't know how we can move forward with Phase Two until the countermeasures that are being suggested here are implemented and show that they are actually addressing the issue. We're talking about doubling the flow of traffic potentially out of that ingress and So it's been well over a year since ingress and egress has been an issue, and has been identified, and the examples I shared with you tonight are from today and three weeks ago, so they're very current. The situation's not good, and I do not feel we should allow Eldridge Town Homes Phase Two to proceed until these issues are addressed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak before we go back around? Alderman Palomski?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments from Alderman Brennan. In response to those, the committee examined the ingress and egress with additional scrutiny, only to recommend the proposal with more confidence. The committee considered the possibility of, in addition to looking at the existing situation, one of the ideas that Alderman Brennan had was to move the location of the entrance and exit, so it isn't directly lined up with, you know, a street to not entice someone to travel and to use it as a cut-through. And the committee considered the option of moving that entrance, but we originally, then we supported the agreement with IDOT that moving it would be inappropriate. And there are a number of reasons for that. So we looked at, so we looked at IDOT policy, we looked at industry best practices, deterrence of prohibited behavior, internal circulation, the utilities, the stormwater and the site plan. But a couple of the reasons, or some of the reasons why this existing location is the best one for the entrance and exit, it's because it's aligned with Swain. Like, that is something that is best practice, creating a four-legged intersection or the appearance of one. It's equidistant, so 700 feet in each direction to the signalized intersections of Butterfield Road and Spring Road, where Spring Road is, and Prospect on one side, Spring on the other. It's 500 feet east of the next right-in, right-out, which is the American Legion. The eastbound lane drop along Butterfield, just east of Eldridge Lanes operates, is a right-turn lane. So in other areas of Butterfield Road, with that width, with those two lanes, it actually is seen as, you know, that's where cars go, you know, to get ready to turn right or left. So that is built in to allow for cars to come in and out of Butterfield in other areas. So this isn't the part of Butterfield that's down to one lane. The location design and spacing are in conformance with the IDOT guidelines. The committee considered the context of the existing development and the traffic patterns, and in particular, who is making the prohibited movement. So like the intern, the applicant did some additional study on this with somebody not apparently studying that, you know, it was not a police officer or somebody, sometimes how people will suddenly be on their best behavior when they see that speed trailer or they see a marked car. But we learned the following, that there, over the period of weekday morning and weekday evening peak periods for traffic, there were 17 prohibited movements observed. So I'm not saying that people are, you know, that this doesn't have prohibited movements. There are, and like other places in town, I live on one of the streets, I live on North Avenue, I mean, I live on Indiana Street, south of North Avenue, where we have a no-left turn during rush hour traffic, and we get a lot of those cars. I think Alderman Jensen is the same situation on his street. He lives right behind me. And, you know, before this committee, we've seen residents from Glade, who lives south of North Avenue, sort of by West Street, where cars travel east on North Avenue, and they make that illegal right turn onto their street. We have found that areas like that do have a lot of, you know, people making illegal turns or illegal traffic movements, and one way to prevent that is with enforcement. And we learned that especially with Glade. In fact, it turned out that it was the residents on that street who are the ones making those illegal turns. That said, we're not just looking at enforcement. That is one tool that we have, but I do think this applicant has made another of other changes. But back to the number, the 17 total prohibited movements that were observed, eight of these vehicles were traveling to or from Elm Creek Court, so that's probably that existing, that complex that has the 378 units plus the additional townhomes. And then also, there were, nine of them were traveling from Eldridge. So we looked, their engineer looked for repeat offenders. So are there people that do this as part of their regular activity? Is this somebody's usual cut-through, or, you know, this is their go-to pathway? That over a 13-hour period, and out of the 37 vehicles associated with, you know, the townhomes making these movements, 14 of them were made by the same five vehicles. So it's the same people within Elm Creek Town Homes, and now that there are additional measures to be able to, first of all, the city, you know, if they choose to increase enforcement there, hopefully that would deter and prevent some future activity like that. But this is a lever of enforcement that we don't typically see in Elmhurst that allows them to impose a fine or to, you know, have some other penalty for these residents. So considering it's the same five people making most of these, that should be a problem that could be significantly curbed just by that activity. We also look for, especially considering the increase in volume with this new project will be less than 1% of the traffic volume around here if the committee agrees with what's being proposed. It will, so if the committee agrees with what's proposed, with, you know, its curbing of the illegal turns, the illegal movements, and knowing that less, you know, the addition of this is less than 1% of that, this development is likely to cut back on the illegal movements, and it will not make it any worse. So, you know, our additional follow-up and our additional study of this and discussion led to the outcome of the report to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Palomski. Alderman Hanquist?
Can I ask you a question, Mayor?
You may.
If we have a kind of serial abuser, do the fines go up with the multiple violations? I don't know if we know that.
I think there was a little confusion, and I think what Alderman Palomski was saying is that the mechanism that is different here is that these aren't condos or private residences where people do what they want. The proposal by the developer, Aimco, is that they will put the cameras up and monitor violators who would then, you are getting fined as a renter, which, you know, you could be in prison for a year. I don't think I said that, but. So they, and it could also be.
Solitary confinement?
It could also be a termination of lease or refusal to renew. So it's, that's in addition to and separate from what the city might do as an enforcement mechanism. So I think, I just want to clarify that. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Additional comments or discussion? Alderman Brennan?
So I just want to reiterate, I appreciate the work that's been done. I mean, I do think there's been attention given to this. I just fundamentally disagree with the timing or sequencing of it. I would like to see the countermeasures implemented and measured before moving forward with 50 more townhomes in this area. So as I said, I respectfully disagree and oppose the report. Thank you.
All right, other discussion? All right, Clerk Tammer, call the roll, please.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliners absent. Brennan?
No.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
No.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent. The report is adopted. Thank you. Onto resolutions, 7.1. Clerk Tammer, please read the resolution.
Resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the City of Elmhurst for the Southwest Elmhurst Stormwater Mitigation Project. See item 4.14.
All right, can I have a motion to put this before council? Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hanquist, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So the report that we approved under the consent agenda, or we approved to suspend the rules, just a little background on the report itself, kudos to staff. DuPage County had a program of funds that we, there are certain criteria that need to be met. The project that met that criteria was our Jackson School project. Our estimate for that work is $424,000. And so city staff did submit an application to get a 200K grant for, to go towards that project, and we successfully secured that. So that's good news. So instead of 424, this project's going to cost the city $224,000. So because of the time sensitivity, we met earlier tonight to approve the report. This all came down very quickly, and the reason it's on tonight's agenda is that DuPage meets next week, and we want to start the project at the end of the month. So we want all these pieces in place so we can maximize the 200K grant. That's the background. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Any further discussion? All right, Clerk Tammer, call the roll.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliners absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Onto item eight, other businesses. Is there any other businesses to be brought before the council? Alderman Hanquist?
Thanks, Mayor. I, a couple weeks ago, was gone for both City Council and for Chief Ruth's memorial, and I just wanted to state publicly my condolences to his family and friends, city manager and the whole police department. I got to know Chief Ruth a little bit over the years that we served together, and I used to walk in and always tap him on the shoulder and go, "How things are going?" And he used to always answer, "Business is good." And he'd kind of wink at me, and I, and so eventually I just started asking him, "So how's business?" And so I'll miss him. He used to vacation up in the same neighborhood I did, or, you know, go up into Wisconsin. I know he enjoyed it, and I'm sorry he won't get to retire there, but I know he enjoyed his life as he lived it, so God bless him and God bless his family.
Thank you, Alderman Hanquist.
And for service.
Other business? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Cahill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.